So we are in open session.
Motion to approve Nick Monaco's contract for three years as written.
Tag it.
Any discussion?
Clag eye. Galvin eye.
Wait mine.
And Nichols eye.
Change the night's contract for three years as written. Tag it.
Any discussion?
Clag eye. Galvin eye.
Wait mine.
And Nichols eye. All right. Thank you, Chief.
You.
If I can get a... You.
Thanks, buddy. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Monica. Thanks, Chief.
So if I can get a motion to adjourn from executive session to... Oh, to recess. Okay.
A motion to...
To recess and come back.
To recess.
To recess until 6:30.
Till 6:30. Tag it.
Roll call.
Clag eye. Galvin eye.
Wait mine.
And Nichols eye. It is 6:30. So I'm going to open the Select Board meeting. It is March 6th at 6:30. First thing, if we can do the pledge.
Do the pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this world, free and sovereign.
Thank you. And before we get started, I'd just like to request a moment of silence for one of the prominent community members that passed away recently, John Ledger. Mr. Ledger served on the Rutland Police Station for 17 years from 1966 to 1983. First as a patrol officer, then as a sergeant, and finally as a police chief from 1982 to 1983. And he passed away last week at the age of 86. So if we could just have a moment of silence in his memory. We thank him for his service and our sympathies go out to his family.
Lyndon, if I may, may I make a motion to take the 300th Anniversary Committee out of order as we have some of the members that need to get the school committee meeting started at 7:00?
Okay. Is there any objection?
No.
Okay. So we will go on to the 300th committee. I think there's a queue here. All right. Who's going to start?
Well, I'm just going to give a little history to start with before we turn it over to Carrie, who will talk about all our accomplishments. But Bonnie Bessie and myself were appointed to the 300th Committee in November of 2019. Not much was done until a little into '21. We met with Mike a few times, tossed around some ideas, then Mike left. So nothing was done for quite a while until we reminded Ron that this was coming up and we needed to do something about it. So our first formal meeting was March of '21, and we have met every Wednesday except during holiday weeks since then. We're still meeting. Here we are.
Thank you, Paul, for having us here tonight. We'd like to present a summary of our work on the Rutland Tricentennial Committee. Our activities and meetings started in early 2021, as Barbara said, with organization and fundraising. Our activities included a logo contest, which was won by Tina Greenfield, establishing our website and Facebook page, fundraising at the Police K-95K, a cornhole tournament to benefit the 300th, Friday concerts on the Common started with four August dates, and it was so successful that they expanded through October 8th. We participated in the food truck festival and we hosted a Halloween decorating contest for the town. The New England Swing Orchestra came, together with the Historical Society, and the Festival of Trees fireworks, together with the Fourth of July Committee. In 2023, we started strong right on January 1st, and it carried on through the year with the Polar Plunge. The Rutland Night at the Railers and the Rutland Night at Waukesha Mountain soon followed with Founder's Week with the Historical Society. We were featured on the Chronicle television show as the geographical center of the state. There was a bagpipe concert, a classical saxophone concert, and then we provided cake at town meeting. 2023 Concerts on the Common ran from June 3rd to September 30th, including 15 bands and numerous food trucks. We celebrated the day we officially became a town on June 18th with a proclamation and cannon fire. The Tricentennial Unity Tree, which was made by Rutland students, is now showcased in the library. Multiple attempts were made to find the 1972 time capsule. We hosted Josh Licker, who's the mayor of Marietta, Ohio, and we had Rutland Day at the Blue Sox with him. We hosted state and local dignitaries. There was a lemonade social and a fashion show together with Historical Society. We partnered with the Fourth of July Committee for a grand 300th fireworks display. We had a parade float. We hosted a family picnic on the Common. There was Rutoberfest and a spirit walk at the old burial ground with a historical. We hosted the Festival of Trees fireworks again. The Smithsonian exhibit came with a dignitary grand opening. Smithsonian programs and presentations included book discussion on the pioneers, a Finnish life presentation, a farmers' forum, a presentation on healthcare through the ages, three lawsuits talk by David Libby, and a taste of Rutland. There were field trips that all Rutland students in grades K through 8 participated in and grade 3 throughout the district. We hosted almost 1,500 staff and students. In total, the Smithsonian brought approximately 5,000 visitors, which surpassed any of the previous locations. Long-lasting projects that were facilitated by the 300th Committee include the ice rink with an additional liner, providing the town hardware for hanging future banners, and the new centerpiece of the town common, our bandstand. We partnered with many state and local organizations, including the Rutland Historical Society, the Rutland Library, the Rutland Fourth of July Committee, Rutland Historical Commission, town departments, including the DPW, Fire, and Police, the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, Waukesha Regional School District, local bands, breweries, stores and restaurants, churches, and food trucks, the Rutland Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts troops, Smithsonian museums, Mass Humanities, the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources, the Rutland Finnish Heritage Society, and the Worcester Regional Food Hub. We are pleased to have the support of Senator Ann Goby, Representative Kim Ferguson, Sheriff Lou Evangelitis, Mayor Mike Nichols, and Town Administration and your Select Board. Our outreach efforts included our Facebook page, which has 1,458 followers plus 200 more on Instagram. We had 11,353 visitors to our Facebook page, and we had over 15,800 people who saw our posts. We have articles and events posted in the Berry Gazette, uniquely Club and Magazine, The Landmark, The Telegram, Mass Live, the Mass Central Kids Calendar, DiscoverCentralMass.org, and press releases were sent to 10 local historical societies as well. These events touched tens of thousands of people, and the impact on our small town is immeasurable. We hope that the 2,200 hours of service given by the volunteers on our committee helped to reinvigorate Rutland's great sense of community and civic pride. Since 2021, the Rutland Tricentennial Committee has raised $68,776.06 in donations. As of today, the remainder in what is called the gift account is $17,806.42. The citizens of Rutland entrusted us with $88,931.71 to use during the year. The remainder in that account is $33,874.99 to go back into the general fund. In conjunction with the library, we also received a grant of $10,000 from Mass Humanities to cover the full cost of the Smithsonian exhibit. There are $677.41 remaining in that account, and they will grant us an additional $10,000 for ongoing programs. The feedback that we have received has been fantastic, and there is a desire from the community for ongoing programs. We hope that the Select Board will continue to support community cultural opportunities moving forward. Thank you.
Much job.
A couple of questions, like all the supplies and stuff, is that those all gone? Or do you plan on having those sold off at some point? Or are they going to be...
I talked to Screen today, and there are more available.
So how would those be made available to the public going forward if you guys are going to be kind of closed down?
They can be purchased at what you make in and hold in.
And then a question on the banners. Do we know what the plan is? I do know that some of the banners are down and stuff. Is there...
Because they blew down. Yeah.
But so do we know what the plan is on the banners? And how long is supposed to stay up?
They were scheduled last year to come down in May. So Waukesha Landscape will be taking them down in May. I did check with Verizon and the grid as far as insurance purposes. They were going to look into it to make sure there was coverage in case something did happen as far as damage, and at this point, we're okay.
And is there any potential for future use of those holes for banners in the future?
Yep. We are donating the hardware.
Yeah.
So you can put up all the banners you want.
But was our contract was limited, though, right? With the company? So we would have to negotiate another contract? But there would be... Okay. So those would probably stay at the DPW, right? I would assume, Gary? Any future use? Does anybody have any other question?
Who would it be? Through the chair.
Name and address, please.
Harry Second, Beechwood Drive, Rutland. With the express of the townspeople that you've heard from looking to have more stuff, do you have any idea of what you'll be doing going forward for 2023? Or how long you want to be doing this?
Guess what? We're done. But we're willing to turn it over to our committee.
Name and address, please.
Mike Sullivan, April Pleasantdale Road. Going forward, Carrie is getting the money, and we're already working on some programming. A lot of the things that took place during the time the Smithsonian was here, there are offshoots of those that people have requested, and the parts of the program that were done can be expanded. So that's the plan.
Then, since you do have programs planned, does all the... Would all the remaining money go back to the town so now they can help fund the library and the projects? Or does that money help fund the library projects going forward? How would that work?
The money from the article, Carrie, goes back into the general fund.
All of it?
The article. And the gift account is what we're trying to get. Swat goes...
So the rest of the money would still be used then for ongoing projects like that $17,000 that was left?
Yeah. We're looking at continuing concerts on the Common. There's activities that we're looking into and trying to get information so we can reach out.
Just to keep things...
Right.
Barbara Campbell. Tamika had a great idea when I was talking with her the other day about appointing an events committee that maybe they could serve for a couple of years at a time to take over some of these things. We've had lots of requests for the concerts to continue. We've had many requests for the Rutoberfest to be an annual celebration. So I liked her idea. I thought it was a good one.
We've had some discussions in the Town Administrators. I don't know if you've seen it posted on Facebook about people being interested in sponsoring the concerts and going forward. And we have had some preliminary discussions about how to set up an account because the money's got to go somewhere. Since you're disbanning, it can't just stay in an account. We've got to see if we can establish a separate account for town events. So that's kind of our plan hopefully going forward. But we just need to check with the treasurer and the accountant and see how it can be established and then find people that are willing to participate in that committee as well. So that's kind of our plan going forward. Now, that's the gift money. The money that was on the article does have to go back to the...
Right. Right.
Thank you.
Name and address.
Karen Narwhal, 149 Comusett Road. I would ask that before disbanded, that the 300th Committee revisit their minutes and change from initials to full names because in six months, when we take down who sat on that committee, no one will be know who SJ is or BB or whatnot. And I think that's how most of their minutes are. It says SJ made the motion, BB seconded. And I think it should be written out so that for history purposes, we'll know who that is.
Is that something that we can... Even if there's some kind of an index...
Put a key. We're in now. Just put a key.
As long as it can identify.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Anita Carlson. I just wondered, Tamika would probably know if you're writing to report for the annual town report because that would be a good spot to...
We're planning on doing something like that so that it doesn't... The history of this whole thing doesn't get lost.
Exactly.
Leah, do you have any questions?
No. Thanks for the presentation, guys. Guys, I appreciate all the work that you've done. It's nice to hear the recap of everything and how much work it was. So I appreciate all the time and energy and everything from everyone on that committee because I know it wasn't always easy. So thank you.
If I may, through the chair, I'd also like to reiterate on that because no matter how many times you've come in my office and yelled at me, we seem to get along pretty good. You guys did a great job, but a lot done. So I thank you very much.
And thank you.
And I'm glad that you're all volunteering to be on the 301st. So we can take names, addresses.
No, the community does appreciate it. It was obviously well-received. And I think that's... Rutland's always been known for liking to have a party and the fireworks and all the additional stuff. You guys did an awesome job. The concerts, as you said, were well-received, and we'd hope to continue some of those going forward and expand on some things.
The one suggestion that I would like to make, you know, as you all know, there was a committee, and then the chairman resigned and left us with a lot of untied strings. And we had no clue who needed a permit for what, what permission we needed for this. And so if we... If some kind of a list or a checklist or something could be formed so that when another committee is formed, they would have some idea who to go to, where to go, how to go about it.
Tamika is always on the case. She's always coming up with a...
We already have one. And the board approved it recently.
Right.
And it's on the website now. So it's a town event checklist. And it's basically like, if you're going to serve food, this is what you need. If you're going to have a tent that's this size, this is what you need. So it will help not only committees, but any local businesses that are maybe hosting an event.
That's exactly what's needed. So that's great.
So it's right on the website, on the Select Board page.
And also, yeah. Piggybacking on that, check-ins as well.
Sorry, just name and address.
Sandra Thomas, 110 Turkey Hill.
Thank you.
Check-ins as well, like from you guys, especially if we're dealing with town money, town funds. Perhaps a check-in from Select Board or whomever just to ensure, like, we have meetings every week for a year, year-plus, and just check-ins to make sure that everything's good and that someone is not taking onus of that, but just like, yep, this is all good, you know? Because finances always get prickly. So, you know? Just to make sure you guys are also checking in.
Anybody have any other... Well, thank you all very much for your hard work. It's well appreciated. And hopefully we'll see you in all the other committees we'll be having going on in the same town. There's always plenty of work to do and plenty of opportunities. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to go back onto the agenda to the Treasury warrant.
Motion to approve Treasury warrant 23-18 and payroll 23-EW18. Tag it.
Any discussion? Gary, do you have...
If I may, through the chair, there's a couple of high expenditures on that, but normal, the S.A.M.A. sewer, infrastructure, and health and dental insurance payments. But I just want to let you know that the... For the, as I stated at last, we give you a running tally for snow and ice deficit. So with this warrant, you have $49,886.
Any other discussion or questions? If we can get roll call.
Clag eye. Galvin eye excluding Safe List.
Wait mine.
And Nichols eye excluding COA wages.
Motion to approve minutes from February 21st, 2023 as written. Tag it.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Clag eye. Galvin eye.
Wait mine.
And Nichols eye.
Approval of minutes of March 1st, 2023. Tag it.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Clag eye. Galvin eye.
Wait mine.
And Nichols eye. Okay. Thank you very much. And then we will... So now I'll just ask if there is any public comment? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Gary Bellows of 8 Valley View Circle. And I have some information to share and a request regarding crumbling foundations. So I have some information I could just read to you and some...
Is it like, I mean, we have had discussions on crumbling foundations? So if you want to submit... If it's fairly brief, only to allow for time.
Yeah. I'd read this off to you. It'll take five minutes or so, if that's okay?
Okay.
So hi, again. I'm Gary Bellows of 8 Valley View Circles. My wife, Charlene. We're here to share some information that concerns us, our community, and our state regarding crumbling foundations due to the presence of puritite. It's a natural sulfur iron-based material that gets in the aggregate of concrete, and it's throughout Western Mass and Central Mass. As you may know, it's been an issue in Connecticut and Western Massachusetts, and now it's becoming more and more an issue in Central Massachusetts and growing in numbers. Our home is affected by it, and our foundation will need to be replaced at a cost of $200,000 to $250,000 or so. Insurance doesn't cover this in either Connecticut or in Massachusetts. So homeowners who have this problem, and there are some that have already taken action to get their foundations replaced, are on the hook for that cost. There is no recourse at this point. We believe there are at least 10 homes in Rutland right now and many more across the state. But we know there are some in town, ours included. And again, all the costs will be borne by the homeowners for the repairs, and eventual loss of homes will occur due to foundation failure. Loss of property tax will occur as homes drop in value. They have no value. With a crumbling foundation, you can't sell it. So that will happen. Real estate markets, we expect, will be depressed as a result of ongoing and more and more of these issues happening with more and more homes. And with no regulations on quarries, the use of contaminated concrete will continue, and this problem will persist. And again, currently, it's... I can show you. We've got some brochures that we can hand out, and we'll show you on some maps where this problem is. And it's significant throughout Central Massachusetts. A lot of homes, all the way from the southern border up to the northern border in Central Massachusetts, have this issue. So we're here to provide you, again, with some information on the issue and to request your support for some legislation that's now currently in progress. Okay? So Senate bills SD 34 and SD 92 have been submitted by Senator Ann Goby in that will establish crumbling concrete relief agency. It will create a crumbling concrete foundation assistance fund to assist homeowners to get their foundations replaced. It will implement quarry licensing and testing and record retention standards to require disclosure of puritite presence in case of purchase or sale of real estate. It will define funding source to support the assistance fund. It will standardize property tax abatements and guidelines and implement permit fees... Eliminate permanent permit fees for foundation replacements. So there's a briefing at the State House on March 28th in Boston, starting at 11:00 a.m. And that's with all the Massachusetts legislators to share this information and to request legislative support for this bill. We're requesting attendance by as many concerned Rutland officials, like yourselves, and the public to be at that briefing. There will be a bus. Transportation provided leaving from the Millbury Park and Ride at 8:00 a.m. on the 28th, traveling to Boston. That meeting will take place from around 11:00 to 2:00, 2:30 in that range. And then there will be transportation back. Certainly, people are welcome to drive on their own. We have brochures that has additional information on this issue. And it has the web address for Massachusetts Residents Against Crumbling Foundations. It, again, has more information. It encourages you to dig into the website, read the brochures, get up to date on the information. Things are happening quickly right now with this legislation. We're really trying to get some effort behind it to get it passed. So it helps us as residents, but helps our town as well to prevent this issue from becoming bigger and bigger. So again, passing this legislation is in all of our mutual interest. We hope to see everybody there, as many as we can to help get this done. And again, we'd be happy to have anybody that is interested, that wants to see this firsthand, to come to our home, take a look. And we can show you what it looks like and, and what we're up against. So appreciate your time and I really appreciate your support in trying to get this legislation passed. Thank you.
Excuse me one second, you said SD 34, and what was the other one?
92, SD 92, yeah.
Thank you, we appreciate, we, we have, we have had a couple of conversations regarding this. And I believe there's information at the library for the crumbling foundations. And did we already send a letter of support? I thought we did, we already sent a letter of support.
Right.
So, and we've had, there's been a couple of very well attended meetings here. So we have been very active in participation in that initiative, so.
So thank you. Again, anybody who can make it, State House on the 28th, 11:00 a.m., would be great, happy to there.
Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate it. Yes.
To the chair. Is there anybody else on Valley View that is, looks like it could be a potential problem for them? So I'm sure the same builder that built yours built all of them on Valley View.
Yes, there's Valley View and there's some other streets within that subdivision. There are others that are suspicious at least. I know one has in fact tested positive. So we know of one conclusively, and there are others that are suspected as well. Then there's others throughout town and not just within these particular subdivisions. There are others around town as well. Holden, they're, they're all around the area.
Thank you.
If I, if I may, to that point, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bellows. But I am under the understanding it's not necessarily linked to the builder, but it's what quarry they, they got the concrete from at the time. So it could be a builder that had built even in the same subdivision. But if they used four different quarries because that's who had concrete at the time, it, it's more linked to the quarries than the builder. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. Multiple builders, you know, building homes around Rutland, Holden in this area, they, they get their concrete from the same suppliers. Supply, the concrete suppliers get the material, the aggregate that contains this material comes from the same quarries. That's, that's, that's what we have gathered as we've gone through and tried to, tried to understand this. So it is, there are particular sources that, quarries that supply this material, that is feeding multiple builders.
And if I may ask, with this, do either of these Senate bills require mandatory testing at the quarry level? And/or notification of, you know, as a homeowner, it's hard to track who poured your foundation, especially if you worked with a builder, because it's as a some contract and whatever. But is there any, it pushed me to identify the quarries or anything?
Yes. Yeah, going forward, this legislation would require licensing for the quarries, which would require testing in order to get licensed. So they would need to provide materials that would be tested to conclude that they don't have puritite in the material that they're using in order to get a license. Beyond that, though, we don't see any ongoing testing of homes as the, as the foundations are poured to, to determine if the presence or absence of puritite at that point. We have talked about it and it, it may get included in legislation at some point in the future. But as of right now, it just requires licensing and testing by the quarries. But it's very important, right now there is none.
Right, I was like, it's a good first step at, at the very least. But it doesn't necessarily provide that continual ongoing protection.
Yes, correct.
If I'm not mistaken, didn't Senator, Senator Goby get secure funding for testing for this through the state?
Yes, there's reimbursement for 75% of the testing cost. Right. All right?
The chair.
Yes.
Just how old, what was your house built?
1997. And there's a, there's a time period, but it's, it's a fairly broad time period. We think the houses are suspect when it may have some material.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Mr. Williams.
Williams, I've got a question for you. When was the last time the town has asked for an audit, a state audit forensic for Waukesha Regional School District?
I think Karen asks every year. I don't think it ever gets anywhere. It's the cost issue.
It's a very big expense.
Yeah, it's a very big expense.
And the towns pay for that expense. We do not have the money.
Right. So the towns would have to all vote to pay for it for an.
We'd have to get four of the five towns to vote for it.
Have you ever tried asking the other towns?
The fee for us alone would be something that would be unattainable for us.
Mentioning the amount? Is it approximate?
I don't remember.
I, I know, we haven't done it recently, but I know in the past we've tried, you know, looking into that. But it's, it was an expense issue. Certainly this year, you know, more than ever, it probably would be more appropriate. But I guess we'll see how some of these issues with the school department play out this year. It's certainly well noted and certainly something that would be beneficial, but it is a cost issue.
Either way, it's a cost issue.
Right, right.
One, one last thing. Do you think the DPW know what shoes are for snowplows?
What shoes are?
Skids.
I'm certain, skids, if they're placed, I certainly hope so, Richard.
I wish the heck they had some. I have never seen my road ever dug up so bad. It was terrible.
Sometimes those skid plates or those shoes, as you call them, and I'm sure everybody knows what they are, is what they, with the, we, lack of freeze, if you will.
Yeah.
Any kind of dirt road or something that's delaminated will certainly dig them up.
Well, with the lack of them, I think with them, you know, usually a plower could probably rely a little bit more on staying above the ground instead of digging it up.
They would dig, and I agree with you until you make the second pass.
Yes.
But I, I hear you, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, we will go to Department head reports, and we have Chief Monica.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me tonight. First, I'd like to thank the board, thank you for renewing my contract. I absolutely love my job and really look forward to serving this town for another three years. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate the opportunity too. Secondly, I'd like to thank you for recognizing Chief Ledger's passing. I corresponded with his son earlier today, and he was very appreciative that the town remembered and recognized it. So thank you for that.
And you had made a note, and I think when we look at the annual report, we, report, we will consider making.
Yes, I have been to the list for intermortem for the board's consideration.
And when will we make?
I have that ready for the next meeting, March 20th.
Okay, thank you.
So last time I was here, I believe it was November of last year. So some statistical updates since then. So far this year, we've had 40 arrests or criminal summons year to date. That's 48 increase since the same time last year. 59 incident reports completed, a 15% decrease from last year. 15 car crashes so far this year, so 42% down from last year. And with, with that kind of stuff, it's, it fluctuates month to month anyways. It really depends on what kind of weather we've had, and the weather this year has been pretty mild. So that's probably a major factor in that decrease from last year. Cost of service this year, 2,420 total so far, just a slight decrease from last year, but pretty close. Staffing update, I'm happy to report that right now we are fully staffed, every position is filled. Since my last update, I had three officers resign to take positions at other departments. They've all been replaced as of now by three officers that all have several years of experience. They came highly qualified and highly recommended by several parties. They've all completed field training and are already on the road doing great. Which leads me to this next part, I would like to invite the board and Mr. Administrator. On Tuesday, March 14th, we're doing swearing in and introduction of our new staff at Dolce Vita, the formerly KPs over on Palmigus Road at 5:30 p.m.
I appreciate that, because I was going to make a comment, because I know we have some new people in the fire department and stuff. And I would like, whenever possible, if you guys can present, especially public safety, any, any new staff coming on. So the board gets a chance to meet them, any opportunity, I appreciate that.
No problem. Yeah, usually I would bring them into a meeting, but I figured with three at once, and I got a few other things I want to recognize from people. So I figured we'd do, there'll be a free dinner too, so.
Oh, free.
Please, if you're available, please consider coming. They'd really appreciate it and they'd like to meet you too. During that, that last round of people I lost, I did lose the K-9 handler, he went to the Lester Police Department along with the K-9. We are very shortly going to restart the K-9 program. And you can expect an announcement sometime very soon on, on that, so.
Is that still a granted program or are we?
Yeah, so I still have plenty of funding, mostly from donations. So everything will be covered by donations, by grant funding, so there'll still be minimal cost to the taxpayer. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to make an announcement at that dinner on Tuesday, so.
If I could shoot you from the chair, I'm sorry. Who, how do you decide who the next K-9 officer is? I mean, that's something you're going to announce?
Yeah, we go, we go through an internal process.
Okay.
Well, yeah, if we're ready to announce it, we'll announce it on Tuesday.
Okay.
Just let the dog loose and pick it.
So can I?
I could be the next K-9 officer.
The chair.
Yes.
Can I ask, with everybody having canines around us, do we really need one? Do we really need one?
I think so. It's always been very helpful, it's been helpful with searches, tracks, drug sniffs. I have, we, we still have the Deveraux School, we still have runaway kids, lost kids, more often than any other town around here. So I would like to be able to rely on our own resources rather than.
Okay, no, I just, you know, whatever.
And it continues to be funded through grants and donations, et cetera, so there's no cost.
If it ever gets to the point where it's unsustainable, I'll, I'll just continue.
And I think it's fairly good for like the public anyway, when you take them to events, to the schools and to other things like that. I think it's good, public relations as well as ones, it's not a, you know, unsustainable expense, which it obviously is not at this point. And I, I think it's a benefit, and that's my opinion.
The last team we had did an excellent job, they were a great public relations pool. And I'd like to keep that coming for the community group, so. Plus, as far as neighboring communities go, I think Holden's the only other one now that, that has one.
Oh, yeah, I thought. Sure enough.
So as far as staffing goes, the other issue I want to address is part-time officers. We're currently at, at maximum capacity, we were running with, back when you were there, there were seven part-time officers. We're now down to three. And that's been kind of on purpose. We absolutely appreciate the work they do and they're a great asset to this town department. But as the, as the profession shifts with police reform and all the new requirements, it's going to be less, more and more difficult to hire and sustain part-time officers. So we're eventually trying to transition into completely full-time department. And I'm happy to say that of the last six people we've hired, three of them have been our own part-time guys moving. So just to give you an idea on the hours, back when we had seven office, part-time officers working, they would each work a minimum of 24 hours a month. So you do all the math, that comes up to, to a complete full-time guy. That's, that's a full-time officer right there. So as, as we lose these part-times more and more, we're going to have to expand the full-time staff a bit. So that's, that's staffing. Regarding drug overdoses, I believe the last time I was here, I was reporting that we were seeing a significant increase, kind of a burst in overdoses, a hacker report that that's gone back down. We haven't had any quite a while, I think we've had one. But we're also, we've kind of reignited a program that the DA's office started. It's a drug overdose follow-up recovery program. So the DA's office got a grant and they actually have a full-time recovery coach that covers this region. So anytime somebody in the area has an overdose, the name is entered into a database. And it goes to the recovery coach. So then the recovery coach contacts somebody from our department. And then they team up together and they go and make contact with the person that had the overdose, see if they can offer them any treatment options, see if they can give them some help or get them someplace where he can get some services. So it's kind of a, a good service to have where, you know, we can team up with a clinician that has the resources to get these people to the right treatment.
Chief, just one question. So at one point, I know we had Narcan in some of the, the town buildings, do we still have that available? Like, I thought we had it.
I don't know if we had any town buildings, but we, we have it at the department, we carry it.
Because I know when there, there was a program going on, it's, you know, there was training available and they could get Narcan through an organization in Worcester and stuff like that. And I thought we had had some locations around town, you, you know.
I don't know if we did.
Is that something we could look into?
We could, yes. Yep. You mean for public distribution?
Just, yeah, so if something happens in the library, before somebody else gets there, it's available to some.
Oh, I got you, okay. Kind of like a diffusator on the wall.
Correct.
Right. All right, we can check into that.
If I'm, if I may, to piggyback on that, Nick, I think where you were going is, would it be possible to, to provide education to the community? Are there, are there resources to provide education to the community who want to carry Narcan for themselves? You know, not necessarily for themselves personally, but loved ones or people that they interact with or, or whatever. So I think that's where you were going, I think, and Lyndon, that's not where we were going. But I, I think that's valuable.
Got you. Yeah, so the recovery coach, he actually helps with the victims' families as well, making sure that they know where they can access the services and also where they can act. And he has Narcan that he can give to people as well.
So you're talking about a program after somebody that.
Yes, yes. But, you know, we would like to, we were doing that stuff with Nancy and Carrie a few years back. And now that COVID is over, and I got a full staff.
And you're talking about programming the library and stuff like that, so I'm sure that group would come back in and provide some.
Yeah, we absolutely love to get back into that. And then we just, you know, the town got that opioid lawsuit settlement money. And we just used a little bit of that to purchase a whole new batch of Narcan.
Is there any education at the elementary level in town or?
Not at the moment, there's some, there are some programs like through the DA's office, they can come and do a presentation. Sheriff's Department does a really nice presentation as well.
At, at the younger level in town or?
I think they, they did something at the middle school. I don't know what they have for the elementary level.
I was just curious, because early or better, I mean.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So I'll move on to some significant arrests that we've had. December 28th, officers on the evening shift attempted to stop an erratic driver. Driver fled from the police, leading them through several, excuse me. Leading them through several parts of North Rutland. At one point, turning around and driving towards the pursuing officer in attempt to strike him. Pursuit continued into Holden, where Holden was able to successfully deploy spike strips, slowing the car down. The car eventually stopped after ramming head-on into a Hubbardston police cruiser. Luckily, nobody was injured. The driver was taken into custody charged with second offense O E Y, two assaults with a dangerous weapon being the vehicle, and a variety of traffic offenses. Early January, night shift officers were told to be on the lookout for a driver wanted for a possible break-in and entering in Princeton. The officers located and stopped the vehicle on Pleasantale Road. While doing so, located a significant amount of marijuana stashed in a hide in the vehicle that was packaged for distribution. So the driver was charged with the drug offenses and then turned over to Princeton P D for that break-in and entry. Also, early January, officers went to a home on Nancy Drive in search of a person with an outstanding arrest warrant for drug violations. Upon entry to the home, they noticed evidence of heroin, cocaine and pills. Another warrant was obtained and executed, where the evidence was collected to charge the male and female occupants with multiple drug offenses. Yeah, the same male party was involved in another interaction a week later and again arrested on additional drug charges. Mid-January, night shift officers took a report of a past sexual assault on a minor. They were able to identify the perpetrator and determine that he is a registered sex offender living in Rutland and out of compliance with the sex offender registry laws. He is charged with failing, he, at that time, he was charged with failing to register as a sex offender. Subsequent investigation by the night shift sergeant resulted in multiple charges against the male, including four charges of aggravated rape of a child. The man is no longer in town. Early February, day shift officers stopped a vehicle on Main Street for traffic violations. Further investigation, they recovered multiple types of prescription drugs that it was unlawful for that person to have. The driver was charged with multiple traffic and drug offenses. And mid-February, evening shift sergeant takes a report of identity theft and fraud from a Rutland resident, from which the victim lost almost $25,000. The sergeant identified the perpetrator and was able to criminally charge him for multiple counts of identity theft and larceny. And end of February, evening shift officer takes a report of a juvenile female being harassed and accosted by a juvenile male, with the male continuously asking for inappropriate photos. Officer is able to identify the male and charges him with criminal harassment, costing a person of the opposite sex and solicitation of nude photos from a minor. March, beginning of March, day shift officers respond to a disturbance where a 19-year-old female assaults one of the officers. And she's taken into custody for assault matter against a police officer. And lastly, this weekend, we had a break-in and entering into a residence that is currently being investigated. So just a snapshot of, what's that, eight? Eight of the more significant arrests and criminal investigations we've had since the last time we talked. Budget? So at, at my last meeting, I believe I told you I'd already expended the entirety of my expenses, expense budget. I believe that was in November. So expense funding continues to come from donated funds from the Deveraux Foundation. There is enough in there to carry me through the remainder of the year, so we're okay there. Overtime currently is 76% expended. At this time of year, it should be about 60 to 65%. We should be okay though, because staffing changes throughout the year have generated a little bit extra money in the regular income. So that should cover any shortfall in the overtime account. I had my meeting with the finance committee last week. I got the impression that the finance committee was supportive of my request, including the addition of a lieutenant's position. But also, they were very realistic with the financial outlook for, for next year. Regarding school safety and school relations, I have meetings scheduled with all three principals of the three Rutland schools next week to discuss school safety concerns and any traffic issues. One of my new officers, Officer Waller, took the initiative to schedule tours for himself and all the other new officers so they can get a, you know, good layout of the schools and see where everything is. I have two officers scheduled to attend the Glenwood School Steam Night next week to showcase some of our equipment and technology to the students and parents. We had five different officers participate in the Breed Across America program at Nacogdoog in Glenwood recently. And lastly, the fire chief and I are co-applicants on a school safety grant that the school district has applied for through EOPS. If awarded, there will be funding for a new security camera system at Central Tree along with Kefon access. Regarding the, the vehicle fleet, so all vehicles are in good operating condition, have recently passed safety inspections. I gotta say that the current state of the fleet is probably the best that it's been in, in years past.
So you're on a good rotation where it's being replaced?
Yes, we're on a good rotation, but we also didn't, we spent money where we needed to. We fixed everything that needed to be fixed.
And in the finance, did you say there was a delay in receiving some vehicles?
Yes, yep, I was going to get to that right now. Yeah, we ordered two vehicles back in May, we still have not received them. I'm supposed to receive them either this week or next week. So it's, it's been a long time. So those, those two vehicles will be replacing two 2017 police explorers.
And there's no change in cost to those, being delayed like that?
There was no change in the cost, but there was a change in the, the finance cost for the lease. So we should be able to absorb it. The disposition of the old cruisers is to be determined, I gotta work it out with the town administrator. We're either going to repurpose them to another town department or probably auction them off. The, the trade-in values were just too low to, to really consider. Also, we recently replaced the animal control vehicle, which replaced the 2012 Ford Transit Connect with over 100,000 miles on it. As far as grants, officers are continuing to work the FY '23 Municipal Road Safety Grant, working traffic overtime shifts. They, they last participated in the impaired driving, impaired driving campaign, which was in December. And will be participating in the distracted driving campaign next month. Sergeant Herzig recently applied for Department of Justice funding as part of a small community body worn camera grant in order to support and grow our body worn camera program, we're just waiting for the results on that. And I continue to apply for Bridge Academy reimbursement funding for any officers that go through and conflict with Bridge Academy.
I think in the finance committee meeting, did you say that the, the animal controls we took brought on another town?
Oh, yes, we did. We brought Paxton, I think, effective in October.
So that will lower our costs.
Yes, and increase the, on the revenue side.
Does anybody have any questions for the chief? Leah, do you have any questions or?
No, I don't think so. Thanks, Chief and the whole department for all that you guys do. I know it's a little different, you know, small town is different. And so I appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry.
Harry Saffman, dirt in between right. Thank you, Chief, for everything you do and your guys, too.
Thanks, Eric.
I can't wait to get the dog back.
Who, who? Soon enough.
Question on those car accidents. The town pet spent substantial money doing a survey and fixing that junction on 68, where there were some accidents. You know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Were some of that reduction due to us fixing that or not?
I think for that specific intersection, yes, there has been a reduction in crashes there.
Okay.
As a result of the flashing stop signs, and it's better marked and everything, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
That actually reminded me, so that ice that went off of somebody's roof into a windshield, was that in Rutland?
Yes, that was on 68.
And so are you taking more initiatives in that area?
My guys actually took the initiative on their own. The next few days after that, they were out hammering cars for snow on the roof and obstructed windshields and all that.
I appreciate that, yeah, because, I mean, it's pretty scary, obviously, that was a...
It's usually something that you consider a danger on the highway, but, you know, when you, 68, sometimes vehicles travel at close to highway speeds, so it's reasonable that the same thing would happen.
What's highway speed?
55.
Carrie again.
Oh, one question. A lot of the night stops your night staff is out there doing, are they transients? Like some of the stops for the drug stuff that you found and, or are they people that were living in town? Are they just transients going through on their way to get to somewhere else?
Let's say, I mean, I don't have the statistics in front of me, but from experience, it's a healthy mix of both.
Okay.
Locals and people traveling through.
Just doing crazy stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We have another question.
Another Dick Williams obolus. One of the things, Chief, I saw that Stigler, that car there went by, by him, and I was amazed. But the school buses, I'm amazed that none of the roofs on the school buses were wiped off. So is there any way of getting information to them to, hey, clean it?
They probably don't go fast enough.
We hope not, yeah.
No, but there's a lot, that's a lot of ice to come down, even at a slow speed.
Yes, right. Thank you. Tuesday, March 14th.
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And next we have our town clerk.
Hi, good evening. Our offices, well, we've been sending out emails to all town departments and boards and committees, and one of the first ones is the New State Ethics Commission website for compliance on the conflict of interest training. So so far, we've registered 160 different employees and board and committee members, and there are two courses that we've always had to do in the past. It's basically the one-hour online training. It takes almost an hour to move through it. Some people tell me you can manage to do it a little bit quicker, but that course is due every two years, and then every year now, everybody needs to acknowledge receipt of a summary of the conflict of interest law. And so we've started, like I said, we've got 160 people registered, and we hope that people, you know, take the course quick so that it, and just get it done, so that the renewals for everybody in town will basically be on the same cycle. There, only, to date, only 63 courses have been completed, so with, out of, well, 320, because it's two courses per person. We have the capability through the site to send reminder emails, so we'll be doing that to anyone that hasn't complied. It's, the Ethics Commission still needs to perfect it. There's, some of the work is too involved, like when someone takes the test. We can run a report, but nothing gets updated. We have to do it manually, but I think in the long run, it's gonna help with compliance for that, so if anybody has any questions, they can just give Candace or me a call. And we did send out an updated records retention schedule. It was updated, I think, through September of last year. And again, that's kind of a, the form that you have to fill out to destroy records is kind of confusing, so if anybody needs any help, we're happy to guide them. Most, a lot of records can just be destroyed after a certain time limit, and the schedule will let you know how many, you know, how many months or years you have to retain it. Others, you have to write for permission to destroy, and then, of course, there's some records that are permanent, and that's a whole other issue. At some point, we really have to start talking more about space for permanent records retention and things like that. We did, when Mike was here, we started looking at areas, but have never come up with a really good solution, so that's for the future. And we also sent out notices to all departments, boards, and committees to please review their own page on the website for any kind of like stale or outdated information, because we don't have the time to go or, you know, or even know what should come down or not. And I know there's a lot on there that needs to be updated. And we also let everyone know that if there's anybody in their department or on their committee that wants to become a user on the website, we're more than happy to give them the credentials and a little bit of training. It's really easy to do, and there's a lot you can do if you have the time to do it with pictures, so we've only had a couple responses for that. And it's dog license time, so dog licenses are due by March 31st, so we're doing a little push to remind people. The $25 late fee starts April 3rd, so, and it's surprising how many people still don't get it done and still end up paying $25 per dog. There's a lot of households in Rutland that have multiple dogs, so we encourage everybody to, that you can, we sent the applications out with the annual census in January. You can download the application on the website. You can also just pay through UniPay, which is all available on the website, or come into our office. And we've licensed, I think, through this afternoon, 966 dogs, but last year, we licensed 1,739, so we have a ways to go. And I suspect there are more dogs than that in town. The other is, the nomination papers are still out there. I know that there are quite a few people that are circulating theirs. We've had eight people pull papers for the various seats, but only two people have returned theirs to date. There's also the new seat based on the resignation that you accepted last week, and I haven't had anyone come in interested in the new one-year seat. I think there's a misconception out there, because I know Tom even asked it that night, that why wouldn't, if three people were running, why wouldn't they just take the three available seats, you know, irregardless of the term? But they have to be separated, and so that you, somebody could conceivably take out papers for both the three-year seat and the one-year seat, could return papers for both of those, but then they would have to pull one of them by the last day before we go to print the ballots, because your name can't appear on the ballot within two different elections for one committee or board. So I'm hoping some more people come forward, because it's always kind of difficult when we have write-ins, and we certainly want to fill the positions. The last day to take out the papers was the 16th, which I think is a week from this Thursday. It's a Thursday, and then they're due back in our office on Monday, March 20th. So that's about it.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Anita?
No.
Leah.
Just one minute, Leah.
Can we take the article out of order for...
Okay, why don't we wait for...
Yeah.
Leah, you wanna go ahead with your question?
I think that that was exactly what I was getting to.
Okay.
I think that it's clear in the agenda, but it's the conversation about the town's exposition, I think, great.
Okay.
Yep.
Name and address.
Peter Crain Nate's way through the chair, if I may. Anita, are there any updates on open meeting law, making the, some of the changes that are in place are now permanent?
I have not gotten any information, but...
That expires next month.
I know, I know. It's getting close, and I've been anticipating something, but I haven't seen anything, and I haven't seen anything come through on the town clerk Google rope either, so we'll try to find that information, because it is, it is coming up real close.
Thank you.
And, yeah, I can do the other, I probably won't leave, so, but thank you for my disill...
Make sure, and are there any other questions before we move on? All right, so I guess Skip made a motion that there's no objection to taking out of order the discussion, what line item is, 35? Any objection? Okay. Town clerk's position, discussion changing from elected to appointed.
Basically, that's a debate that a lot of communities are having. I'm not sure of the exact, the numbers of town clerks and appointed town clerks. I think a lot of the bigger communities have gone to appointed, but basically, the office of town clerk is one of the oldest elected offices in Massachusetts, and the clerk is the keeper of the record and the chief elections officer for the community. I just, I wanted to do a little background. There have only been six Rutland town clerks in the last 125 years, and believe it or not, and from 1896 to 1965, the three clerks were all members of the same family, the Hamp family, and they operated out of their home in town. The Louis Hamp was, he was town clerk for over 40 years, and then he was followed by his wife Frances for 11 years, and then their daughter Linda for 16 years. Then Irene Ampton, who everyone remembers, served from 1966 through 1991, and she was followed by Sally Hayden, who served for another 21 years before her retirement at the end of 2011. So my nine years is nothing compared to all those town clerks. But, and the basic core functions of the town clerk's office are still balloted out there, and that's basically overseeing elections, voter registration, and vital records, registering birth, deaths, and marriages, and providing certificates. But the office has become increasingly complex with more and more state regulations, and compliance for a lot of those fall on our office, so things like that are a good reason to really look into and talk about going to appointed. I know that, I know, I know many really dedicated appointed town clerks, and I know dedicated elected town clerks. I see the argument on both sides, the independence of an elected town clerk, especially being the chief elections officer, but just the fact that we, like on a daily basis, we utilize and interact like four different state systems with things always changing, and you need updating, things like that. So I, I mean, I think it makes sense to put the article on the warrant. It's a two-part, two-part process. It has to pass on the town floor, and then it also has to be on a ballot. So, and I think, you know, hopefully, on the town floor, it's gonna ultimately be the voter's decision whether to place that or not, and then, and even if it gets placed, it depends on what happens at the polls after that, so, you know, I think, one thing is, is I would request that it wouldn't take effect until I retired, so, but, and basically, you know, I love my job and I love the town, and I do want to see the best person possible take over when I retire, whichever method it takes to get there.
To the chair?
Yes.
When are you considering retiring?
I'm, I have not made any decisions.
I didn't either, Anita.
They're pushing you out, Gary?
Leah, I have a question.
Just a minute, Karen. I'm sorry, I just acknowledged one other, so I'll be right with you, Leah.
Sorry, Peter Crain Nate's way again. Are we sure that's all we need to do? And I think of the special legislation we have in process right now, and I want to make sure...
That we're doing it properly, yes.
That we're doing it, and we don't have to go through this again.
Yeah, I believe so from other conversations with legal, but it wouldn't hurt to double-check.
And there's sufficient time to get it on the ballot as well?
Yeah, the same, you know, the same with any other ballot question.
I'm sorry, Leah, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, so I have, I have two questions. Would this, it would be an appointed position by the select board, or is it an appointed position by the town administrator that brings forward to the, you know, to the select board, I guess? And my other question was, are you anticipating it being at this town meeting and this ballot, or this town meeting and next year's ballot?
And I think it would have to be that, because you wouldn't want a question on the ballot that didn't pass at town hall, unless there was a way to word it, you know? So I think it would have to wait for the following of '24, which is actually when I, when I would have to run again.
Right, I think we had talked about this in the fall, and that was my understanding was the thinking would be, it would be potentially conversation and a vote at this annual town meeting, but then the ballot question would be held until next election, so in 2024.
And I think that that would have to be a discussion, your other point about whether it was something that would be appointed by the select board or by a town administrator.
I just wasn't sure if you were familiar with how other communities do it. I haven't looked into it at all, so full disclosure, I just wasn't sure if there was a...
Yeah, I can look into that and do a little survey.
I can actually talk about briefly the town administrator versus select board. After a lot of discussions in the bylaw committee with town council, every appointment by the town administrator is by and through the select board. So it would take an explicit act by the select board to delegate that appointment power to the town administrator to make that possible. Otherwise, he would nominate, he, she would nominate, and the select board would approve or not.
Harry?
With the town clerk overseeing the election process, is that a standard in this state, whether it's appointed or elected? Does every town clerk oversee the election process?
I think in some of the bigger cities, there's election commissions.
Okay.
So, but in towns, it's generally the town clerk that staffs them and oversees them, and that is one of the, you know, one of the pros for staying elected, I think.
Well, my thought was, it's such a contentious issue in the United States today, voting that. I'm just wondering, I just wondered if that was something that was mandated by the state for the town clerk? Or is that something that is like just purview to Rutland? Rutland says our town clerk oversees the election process.
No, it's, it's the duty of the town clerk's office in general.
Okay, so it's...
Master and roll off.
That's a state, okay.
I mean, obviously, the concerns, it's not as much of a concern with a sitting clerk for reelection as much as, I mean, as an election, almost anybody can... as an election, almost anybody can run, so you don't have to have any qualifications necessarily. It could just be a popularity popularity contest. And you could get a clerk in that has absolutely no experience in the position, and that that becomes an issue. Obviously, when you're having debates and talking, when you're running for a position, you would hope that the residents are gonna be well educated in it, but that, you know, the concern would be that you could get somebody that absolutely does has no qualifications for the positions.
I mean, I kind of hate that term popularity contest because I really, even though sometimes I don't, I have to have more faith in in the voters, you know, that they would do due diligence. But it could can be, you know, conceivably be a scenario where only one person ran because I do know some people, very good town clerks, that would be very, very apprehensive about ever getting in the position to have to run for their job. So that's that's one of the other the other points, but.
Any other questions?
Do you do we need a motion to make sure this is put on this down warrant?
I think when we do the warrant, we could do it correctly.
If the board could make a motion to draft an article, so that way I can work on that, and then we can then put it up for discussion.
Right, and Anita was going to get some additional information, so for the.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Clock eye.
Galvin, I.
Wait, and I.
And it goes on. Thank you, Anita.
Thank you, Anita.
Thanks, Anita, for all the conversation about that. I appreciate it.
Anytime.
All right, we're going to go to item thirty three, mastery holding LLC, request for extension of post community agreement. I know it had some discussion, I believe you have represented with.
Yeah, how you doing?
We just want to introduce you, your name.
Yeah, I'm Matthew Brody, Mastery Holding from seventy nine Main Street. As you guys know, we already have our HCA for cultivation. We had to go through the whole process to have the town bylaw change in order to make sure that manufacturing would work in our location. So we recently just dealt with the CCC, we got our provisional license for cultivation. We met with the planning board last week, and we got our special permit to go ahead and start construction. Doesn't really affect that part of it for us as long as we can, you know, get the HCA for manufacturing by the end. But we are now ready to reengage the Cannabis Control Commission for manufacturing as well. And it just happened to expire about two weeks ago, go figure. So if you guys could reinstate that for us, we would just start that process again. And, you know, we'd be back in front of the planning board, hopefully, in the next couple of months for that special permit as well. And, you know, we'll be open hopefully in the next four or five months, give or take.
And this is for a nine month term at this point?
Yeah, we we would be, again, going with it very quickly, though. See you back here probably in the next month or so.
Just number seven.
A little bit, no, I have. I thought it was eighteen months you were looking for at the beginning, but no, I'm sorry.
It was initially eighteen months, but we had to get the bylaw changed in order to make sure we weren't going to have a security risk, you know, having to have the facility twenty feet off site, if you guys remember, at the town meeting. Now that that's good to go, you know, we just got through the CCC process for cultivation. So right, we turned around, we go, okay, it's manufacturing time, our HCA expired. So, I mean, we would be refiling it with the CCC again in the next couple of weeks. The paperwork's all ready, but this is the one outstanding issue for us.
Anita, you had.
Oh, I just I just wanted to point out that after the town meeting, our office has to send any bylaw changes, zoning and general bylaw changes, to the Attorney General's office. And they have a timeframe to respond, and we haven't heard back from them yet, but it should be fairly soon.
Yeah, no, we're we're confident enough to move ahead with it.
Skip, do you have follow up or?
No, I'm sure nine months is more than absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
It's Leah.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, Leah.
Oh, sorry. I think I heard that you're confident that nine months is enough, even though you you're, I think, if it were, if we granted you the extension, it would really be kind of in the hands of the CCC at this point. But you're confident that nine months is enough time to work with CCC to get it through. Because I know we've had some hiccups, some other entities have had hiccups with the CCC just taking longer than expected.
No, absolutely, and it definitely took a while the first time through. But now that we are already been through once and we've got a provisional license from them, it's more of a shoo in process at this point. As long as they receive our paperwork, they have ninety days to respond to us, so that that should give us more than enough time. But I appreciate that very much, thank you.
To me.
I know you guys have been making progress, you know, you were working with the bylaw, and I know you've been in front of planning board a few times for the for the grow and everything. So I I appreciate that that ongoing work that you're doing. So that was one of my concerns was what has been done thus far, and I see that you've been making progress, so thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. If I may also, should we acknowledge, I have one of my partners is on the Zoom as well, possibly could, I think, he has something to say.
Go ahead, I don't know if he's.
Can you unmute yourself?
Hi, I'm Nick Hernandez.
Hello, Karen.
I was at the meeting just last week. Yeah, certainly, we wish to be done within nine months. If if what you guys have written now is inclusive to eighteen, you know, that would just give us just a little bit more time to work through the semantics of the regulatory process. But, you know, as Matt said, I mean, we're very happy to to be doing business for Rutland and hope this all works out well. And if you have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Okay, so was he indicating that he didn't want nine months?
No, he was saying if you could do eighteen, I I guess.
I personally don't want. Better if you come back later and ask for another one.
Nine months overall.
But if you, in my opinion, you get too much time, you're going to drag your feet, and you're going to be.
No, we're we're well underway construction at this point.
Yeah, well, that that's what you might be, you know, that's fine.
Do you guys want to see that new roof over there?
No, no, we're no, we're we're, sir, with all due respect, we are not in the business of dragging our feet. We move fast and we move hard. It it.
Then it should be done in nine months, right?
It does us no good.
We'll be open in August.
It does us no good to belabor getting into business. I'm I'm not one of the owners, I represent them. The sooner I get them in business, the sooner they are on their way. It it does me no good to make this take any longer than it should. And quite frankly, it's probably taken longer than it should anyways. You know, we we want to move through these regulatory hurdles as fast as we can. We, there is no benefit to me or my client in having this take longer than it has to. You know, should we encounter some other regulatory hurdles, either by way of the town or, you know, by the state and by CCC? And, you know, we we would like to be afforded that time. Because at that point, you know, substantial amounts of money will have been invested to make this happen. You know, if if we could just tie this up with a bow and get it done in the next three months, you know, we would definitely do so. And we're more than in a position to do so. I mean, we would get it done right away. But obviously, we have to comply with all the laws, we have to comply with bylaws, we have to comply with cake laws.
We had enough.
So that so that, you know.
I think we had enough.
On our side.
I think we're all set. Tinker, did you have any questions?
I was just going to add that I ran this by town council as well, and they said that with a certified vote of the board as an amendment, or excuse me, an addendum to the HCA, that that was acceptable.
Okay.
Just wanted to confirm that.
All right, so no other, if someone wants to make the the motion?
I'll make the motion for nine months.
Do you have to, does he have to read the actual?
Nope, that's just for the.
Would you have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Clock eye.
Galvin, I.
Wait, and I.
And it goes on. All right, we are good to go.
Thank you, awesome.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to making you guys proud. Tour in August, I insist you all be there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is probably just discussing meeting.
Well, then, just general updates, so.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to move jump to thirty six, the future plan for town hall.
Does anybody have any objection to taking that out of order? Okay, so the last meeting, we started talking about ARPA funds and some of the, and I apologize, Gary, because we skipped over you because we've taken everything out of order. So we're going back to you, but we're going to have this discussion right now. We started talking about ARPA funds and using them for some of the necessary renovations and things that planning forward. And then after we had that discussion, I thought, well, why don't we have capital improvement weighing in on how we're utilizing these monies, especially if we're talking about what the most dire needs are? So I don't know if you had a chance to discuss it at your meeting, Harry. Thank you for coming and at least being part of the conversation. So I want to make sure that we're getting input from your your group as far as some of the the most important things that we need to start looking at if we're going to be looking at spending some of this money.
Mr. Chair, appreciate that. The committee appreciates that. Our our issue isn't funding process. Our issue is we are not a committee that that is capable of reconstructing infrastructure. So what we did is we took the report, the facilities report that was done, we look at that. We've been discussing the town building now for probably five, six years in terms of what needs to be done. Our overall consensus is that you can't deal with a building all by itself. You have to deal with a complex. In other words, just fixing the town building doesn't fix anything else. It doesn't fix our limited space that we have other places. So how do we construct a building that doesn't move, that ties into the center, that allows us the growth of expanding the fire department, expanding the police, expanding the nine one one center? How do we do that? And spending even ARPA money, in our opinion, doesn't fix the problem. It does correct some things to allow minutes to be moved, but we're still facing the same problem three, four, five years down the road. The building needs to be expanded, in our opinion, because there's just, it's it's an old building. It's nineteen thirty six, I believe. And according to the facilities report, by two thousand and thirty five, the town is supposed to be having a twenty five percent energy reduction. Well, when you have one third of the town hall, I'm sorry, one third of the town hall that is wasting basically one third of the energy that's being produced, you need to correct that, too. You just can't say, okay, we want to move from here to here. We need to fix it so that it encompasses everything in that energy reduction besides the laboratories, the plumbing, the wiring, so maybe outfitting itself. So if we want to spend four million dollars, what's that going to buy you? And do we have four million in ARPA funds? So we could fix a few buildings, we could fix some air conditioning, we could fix the heating. But that means we have to reconstruct the whole third floor, second floor. Okay, we got to put an elevator in, but we know that's not going to be cheap. So when we looked at the facility, we felt this is way beyond us. We need to have a building committee that can look at all the buildings out there and decide how we're going to reconstruct stuff. So I'd love to say, yeah, we'll use the ARPA funds for that if we can. But it's much more massive than that from our perspective.
So part of part of our conversation was that we have this funds and that they're not going to be there forever. And concern is, and I brought up that I have concerns that Congress at any time could decide that they want to pull any of those funds back. So I'm I'm a little bit nervous about not committing those funds and losing any opportunity. Some of the some of the things that were concerns that if we are going forward with facilities, obviously, a lot of the upfront expenses, architectural, engineering, a lot of those things in order, before you can even go out to get funding, are are huge expenses. And that would be an opportunity to use some of these funds if we know that we're going to go forward with certain facilities, to use those funds to secure those type of of studies, engineering, environmental, like I said, whatever it is that we, those upfront money, that upfront money, so we we could go forward in the future looking for funding. So I thought we had a little bit better of a grasp on what the the most needy facilities were. Like, I mean, there was discussions, I know Leah felt that the town hall wasn't worth renovating or adding to. And I I thought we had, we had actually got plans and stuff for the town hall, right, for the expansion.
We do, we have three different phases of town, we do expansion.
Part of this conversation come up came came up because, and Gary, I apologize that we didn't, we skipped over you, but we're going to get to you. But part of the conversation is is moving dispatch. And Gary's dealing with that right now, so he's looking for where he's going to move it and what's going to be the most practical. But like I said, I I was looking at committing some of these ARPA funds, just things that are going to move us into the future that we may not have the the funding to do upfront, you know.
And I think our committee, if if I could take a vote, would be in support of using the ARPA funds for that. We know something critical has to be done on the town hall. We are outgrowing it. We know that once we hit ten thousand, it becomes a different issue for the town. So if the town continues to grow the way it is, and we want to keep the character of the town hall, you're talking twenty, thirty million dollars to make a structure in town that would have the fire department, the police department, the dispatch, the town hall, everything within walking distance, the way the new plan that I saw was laid out, that people could consider that the center of the town without looking anywhere else to build another building. I mean, there's.
And. Can I interrupt for one second? I'm sorry, I apologize, I have to leave, I just wanted to say one thing. I think it's, we've talked about it before, the ARPA funds, you know, I'd like to see some of the land we still own, like, for example, off Maple, like, you know, some of the Heights land left over. Build, you know, look into a town hall slash senior center, combine the two, if that's possible. And then maybe down the road, look into redoing some fields, maybe a recreational center, which we don't have. And now that we have some money to secure the engineering plans to go to the next step. You know, it still may be not doable, but at least now we have that chunk of change. Let's see if we can do it, you know, and let's see what the, you know, we can get some, maybe some, see what we can get from the federal government for grants and.
Yeah, I think that's what we're trying to say, Tom, is that we know there's a big problem. So if we can use ARPA funds to start the process, get the engineering, get the survey done, whatever needs to be done, then I think that's a positive move that a lot goes out.
I think it's a smart smart move.
Absolutely.
So, I apologize, that's a lead.
No problem. So, Harry, one of the discussions were is if we were going to move forward with the town hall in the expansion is if we were able to cut out and still put the elevator in so that would make the top floor accessible and usable. Right, Gary, isn't that part of the thoughts? Because he's thinking about, he's gonna, if the dispatch is going to go into the annex, obviously, everything in the annex is going to have to go somewhere else. So Gary had considered putting them in the town hall. But I, so I don't know if it's worth investing in that if the elevator can be installed and making it more accessible, that would be the first step, as long as it fits within the plans that we've already developed for the town hall. You know what I'm saying?
And if if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, Leah.
My my point was not necessarily that town hall definitely was not worth saving. My point was more if we have these plans in front of us and we know that an elevator itself or a lift itself is probably at this point close to a million dollars, because a lot of this work was done years pre-COVID with when Mike Nicholson is TA. So those plans, so if we know that, then is there value to thinking even, in some ways, even more grand, but knowing that we're going to be investing in buildings that need more than just an elevator or a lift? And as the town grows, we're still not fitting properly in the space that we have. Whether it can be totally reconfigured, I don't know. And so so that was more my point was if in order to have a functional town hall that is going to serve a population of over ten thousand, and it's going to cost us five to seven million dollars to get there? I don't know, I'm just throwing ballpark, you know, like, I have no idea how realistic these numbers are. And we know that there's needs elsewhere. Is there value to looking at a bigger project that encompasses more, to Tom's point, bringing in a senior center that then could potentially open up additional space throughout town to allow that that continued growth across all aspects of the town? And that was my point, was more so, are we just going to continue to throw throw ARPA money at buildings that are falling down, to the interior of buildings that are falling down, but then not actually having usable spaces that's that's going to be usable beyond right now? If that makes sense.
Right, and I guess the way I was looking at it is even if we don't keep that as the town hall, we keep that facility, in order to have public use, it's going to have to be accessible. So if it was practical to put an elevator in there regardless of what that building is used for in the future, then that would be a consideration. As far as the senior center, I mean, there was money put aside for a study that's never been done. Isn't there like $10,000 or something?
Thirty-five.
Thirty thousand dollars. That's just been sitting there and no progress has been made. So it's going to be difficult unless we have things like the town hall and stuff like... But we already have all the plans and specs and the engineering for the town hall, correct? I don't know the best way to move forward, but I think we do need to move forward. And I do know, having been working in this area for many, many years, this is the most difficult part for towns is to get the initial startup funding to get the engineering in these costs because you can't get a loan unless you have that information. And this is an opportunity to try to obtain that information on some of these facilities if we're going to be moving forward with them.
One of the things that the town hall is not is fully ADA compliant. So if the...
Fully, it's not... No, I know.
So if we could use ARPA funds to become ADA compliant, at least that would be for the town, the citizens would be a positive thing. And if that included the elevator, which may have to be torn down when, and the building, when everything?
Well, I'm hoping that...
Maybe that's a thing to do.
I'm hoping that if we put the money into the elevator, it's going to be within the plans. I mean, is that, I haven't even seen the plans. Is that feasible that that elevator could be installed previous to the expansion out the back?
Yeah, because the elevator was actually going to, but the plans we had initially way back when was to put the elevator on the backside of the building.
And was it, was it broken out what the cost of the elevator was?
At that time, it was, no, not with this, with this report we have now, no, but when we priced it years ago, it was $250,000.
That was a long time ago.
It was a long time ago, yes. Certainly.
Yeah, no, it certainly cost a lot more than that, but I don't know. Like I said, I think we need to take action. I don't want to, I think, I want to invest the ARPA funds wisely, but I also don't want to sit on them and, like I said, potentially lose opportunities.
I don't know what the ARPA funds can be spent on. I have no idea what it was spent on for the most part, and I don't know what's available. But I can tell you if capital assets are in there, we can give you a share of those that we need, that's for sure.
We can use that, we can use it for those purposes.
Okay, because there's a lot...
Well, it's pretty open right now. One thing we, it's obviously not good for operational recurring expenses, so we're not, you know, it doesn't make sense to use it for hiring staff because it's only going to be a one and done. So it should be something that has a term.
Right.
Corrected, where do we stand now, Becky, on that?
There's a, the balance that's not allocated is $823,000.
Okay.
So...
And part of the reason, when I talked to Harry last week, and obviously Rebecca, we talked about our borrowing power, Harry, I know you mentioned it and you asked if Becca could, Rebecca, Becky could be available, so, because we're in a good position. The town's in a good position to borrow to make these big expenditures happen. Just to give you a play-by-play, Harry, the dispatch center, if it was moved to dispatch, is fully funded. The town doesn't pay a dime. The problem with that, obviously, it's not a problem that it's fully funded, but it's not funded to put the annex someplace. So we'd like to, I mean, structurally, the town hall is sound. We put a lot of money into that years ago. We had the insulated inside and out. We put insulation underneath the vinyl siding, the attic, everything was done in that. There's a lot of work have to be done, certainly. But we figured that would be the best place to keep the central offices in the center of town, just like, just like you stated.
I think it's perfect to keep everything as a center complex right there.
Yeah.
For your citizens, for the people who come there, they can park in the back, they want to go to the police department, the fire department, put the senior center in there. It's a fabulous idea. I saw some of the plans and the things that were laid out were great. It's just that I just don't want to see good money go after bad. Bad money go after good. Because there's a lot of things we can spend those ARPA, $800,000 is a drop in the bucket for us in terms of what can be spent on this capital improvement. But ADA compliance, if that means the elevator, that's a key right there.
So I guess we should at least like review what the cost of that is and then we should review the capital improvements list of other needs.
Yeah, I talked to Harry about that the other night, so I want to get that list moving and see what we have there. We know we have to, we have to make some purchases, so.
And can the plans be made available to all of us? Because I haven't seen them recently at all, so, even if they're just like left in the, in like Tamika's office or something so that we can try to see them myself.
The plans for the town hall, correct, Leah, the ones that were developed?
Yes. Yes, yes, please.
So it doesn't just be accessible?
Yeah, they're right there on the table.
So at least, I mean, at least we'll get some ideas and I think we should at least start thinking about moving forward with some of the direction in utilizing them.
If I can just add, I think we're getting more capacity for debt as I've talked to CIBC and Gary about. In 2027, we have about $500,000 that is coming off of the debt for the town. The use of ARPA funds to do these type of engineering studies would be, like, to set it up so that we could do temporary borrowing and do a final borrowing for some type of major renovation or this type of project in 2027 would keep our debt at a level amount for, which is what is the goal for, you know, most of our financial policies, is you want to stay at a level debt, you don't want it to come off and then go back on and because it doesn't, doesn't work well for your tax base and that type of stuff. So in 2027, we have a lot of capacity, a lot of the debt, there'll be three, three remaining debt payments for a total of about 337, where right now we're at, I'm sorry, it'd be about $337. Right now, we're still at a million for FY '24. So there's, there's about, in those four years, we have $600,000 in just debt service coming off.
Not the actual debt, because that's a...
Right, but that's...
Right, the debt service is how much you're paying each year.
Which would go towards a payment for...
Something else, right, right. For an example, I mean, we did get an estimate for like $2 million to borrow for roads when we were looking for that. The debt service on a $2 million, let me see, average life, 10-year, 10-year borrowing is about $175,000 a year. So if we had a capacity of 400,000, it would be, you know, just multiply.
And have to get some of these buildings built that we want to go forward.
Yeah.
Well, I just want to have a plan, so we need to have some active discussions about going forward with that. I think, like I said, I don't want to wait until, I mean, I want to have that opportunity.
I mean, I've talked here and that, but do you need any? We've got a lot of information. We just don't put it out there and we don't talk about buildings because that's not. But we had concerns about how it was being done. So if you're looking for us for anything, we'll be happy to sit down with you. You're invited to come to the committee, anything to give you our thoughts on it.
So why don't we grab the first couple of things we discussed and then once we have that information, we can schedule a joint meeting to further discuss some direction as far as the ARPA funds?
Yes.
Does everybody agree with that? Did you hear that, Leah, say, I...
Yeah, that makes sense. So basically, another, like a joint meeting with CIBC, it could include this information.
Right, which we've been trying to have joint meetings with most all the committees and stuff anyway, so we're...
Yeah, yeah, that's the way I see it, yep.
Okay, any other comments or questions on that? And I guess, Gary, when you give your report, which will be next, we'll try to work further on the annex situation. Thank you, Harry. So skipping back to the beginning for the town administrator's report. Mr. Kelleher?
Yes, sir.
Drop.
Couple of things, I'll try to keep it quick. The first thing is to remind everybody, as the board knows, next Monday, a special selectance meeting will be the final interviews for the town administrative candidates. I have talked with the firm, so the board knows. We have viewed the questions they have sent, the format. So the format will be the firm will be here to ask the questions so that, in order to give the board more time to concentrate, obviously, on the answers and not go back and forth. And then certainly the board can follow up with anything if enough, they feel enough information was given by that. So to all, as you all know, there'll be three finalists and the first interview starts at 4:00 next Monday afternoon.
So they'll ask the questions and then if we want them to expand on their answers, as long as it's in line with the same questions? Because we don't want to veer from, yeah. So any questions we ask one, we have to ask all three, to make sure they're in line. So is everybody okay with that? I think it makes sense rather than rotating the questions and causing confusion. Are you all right with that, Leah?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, let's get to your comment then. Yeah, I'd like it to be as smooth as possible. And, you know, as Gary had mentioned, it would be much easier for the, for the board to concentrate on the responses rather than worrying about answering, asking the questions, so.
So might I say right now that I would rather not make a decision on candidates so that our missing member has a chance to, through state approval and all that, have a chance to...
Have you heard any response and participation in that?
Discuss.
I mean, that certainly, it's, it makes sense and, you know, we'd entertain that at the meeting.
All right.
You know, I mean, anybody can make any motion to post, you know, make the decision at the net for...
Yeah, we could make it for the following, following meeting.
But I mean, we probably should have something scheduled fairly quickly. We don't want to drag on too long or whatever, so we'll have to...
Well, do you have a regular meeting scheduled for the following Monday, the 20th?
So we just drop it on the next...
Drop it on the next page.
Is, is the firm and/or the candidates aware of that potential? Just, I know you generally, it's interviews and a decision is made or a conversation is held and, at least conversation is held at night. Is there notice to the, to the firm that that is a possibility?
They'll discuss that with the firm, that part of it, no.
Well, I can, I can see, because, yeah, correctly, there will be discussions, so, I mean, that...
Especially interested on the agenda, but not specifically a decision.
Right. But we typically do have discussion. I guess we would probably want to make a motion at that time to have discussion and make a decision or postpone discussion and decision. Because it does, in my opinion, it doesn't make sense to have discussion because at that point, most people, it's going to be pretty, you know, obvious who, who people favor or leaning towards or whatever. So it, I think we need to have both the discussion and the decision in the same meeting. So we can, if we postpone one, I would, I would say to postpone both, in my opinion.
I agree.
And then we can just let the firm know that, you know, more than likely that the decision will be postponed to our next meeting unless the board feels strongly and somebody makes a motion and the board decides differently.
I would, I have a question. How would that work? Would Carol be attending that next meeting to participate in the conversation, discussion and the vote?
Does she have to attend to the vote, right?
No, I've talked with Anita, she does not have to attend to vote.
Okay, so she needs, so she needs to review the interviews?
Correct.
And then she...
So she, so the Mullins rule that I mentioned the last time, I was incorrect and it does not apply. That only applies to public hearings. So, so long as she is aware of the, you know, watches the meeting, is aware of what was said, she can still participate in the vote if she chooses to. But it has to be live, she has to participate at...
So she would have to be there for the vote? Okay, I think that was the question.
Yes, it cannot be any other form other than participating live in the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that was, that was my question. If she would be, if we, if we did postpone the session and the vote, if she would be there live? Or because, that's the only way in my head that it made sense, so, thank you.
Yeah. Is everybody on set with that?
Yep.
Good.
Well, the other thing I have is just a little update on the budget. Everybody knows we're there, we're, this is, I don't mean we're there yet, Karen. I mean, we're there, we're discussing the budgets. I did, I thought we would have the school district's budget number now set in stone, but they did not have a meeting last Thursday, they're holding it tonight, as we know. But I am going with what finance told me last, last week and have entered their number in to our draft budget, if you will, 9.55%. So what they're looking for from us is that increase is they're looking for $15,411,000 and 500, $411,503, that's what they're going to increase their budget by. Per the meeting and discussions that we have had with finance, we are, and I did, finance did ask for a level, a balanced budget by Thursday night's meeting.
Wednesday.
That you have it by Wednesday, for Thursday night's meeting, thank you, and you will have that. We have begun working, actually, I came in the next day, Friday. Might have been over my allotted hours, Karen, but I was in the next day. And to Rebecca, thank you very much because I bothered her to get, you know, she checked the formulas and on the spreadsheet. Tamika's been certainly very helpful with this, so.
Becky's always in on Fridays.
Excuse me? So anyway, thank you, I mean, because it's not, it's not, no one person can do all of this while dealing with Karen alone. We need help. But we're there and you will have it Wednesday. We're, we're almost there. I met with major departments, some of the major department heads today. We know where we stand. It's not good news. Lyndon, it's, obviously, you were at the meeting for, with the school last week. It's a tremendous amount of money that the school is looking for just to, just to have a needs-based budget with that projected amount from the school and our initial budget request to finance of need-based. We're looking at 1.9 million dollars to balance the budget. Where do we get that? So...
So, and obviously, it was a very frustrating meeting. I don't know if anybody tuned into it, I was not very happy. And obviously, an override is, without a question, there's no way we'd be able to move forward without some kind of an override between the board and the finance committee. We'll have to come to some kind, we are meeting with them on Thursday night to start discussions on how we're going to address that. But just the mandated amount alone would devastate our departments, so obviously, we're going to have to take some kind of action. But it was very frustrating to hear what's happened in the, with the school and what's happened with the finances over the years. And as Karen and I've known, we've, we've been trying to demand line item budgets and accountability and information. And what really irritated me is when I heard the school committee saying that they had asked for information, that they were not receiving and they, and they still continue to approve the budget. So there's accountability on the school committee members' part as well to accept that. I mean, I thought it was just us complaining for 20 years and being called, you know, we didn't support education and being bashed as the people that just didn't want to pay our fair share when there was just never any accountability. And now we can see that there's a reason for it because they didn't even know what they're doing. So it's very, very frustrating. But bottom line is, obviously, we're going to be in a situation where we're going to have to look at some kind of an override.
Yeah, and a bigger problem...
Without devastating our resources and our services.
I agree. Some of the problem is, you know, because you were there and you've heard them all say it many times, that they're, they're trying to correct the mistakes that happened in the past. And they're doing it all this budget season and it's, it's really going to hit home. So, I mean, we, 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 the town of Rutland, for many years, many years back, have always kind of succumbed to this. And we always get a little band-aid to fix it, but we have to go for the whole, the full bore. We have to do what we can. We're certainly, this office certainly realizes, as sad as it is to say, that we're going to need an override. We have to support that, we have to work on that together and make it happen. We have to have a series of meetings, informational sessions. We have to get the word out to the public. We have to let them know through our departments what we'll be not able to give them anymore. Never mind what we cannot give them currently, but there's going to be additional items that we just can't deliver. It's troublesome, but I, on the other side of that, I'm optimistic that we can all put our heads together and get it done. So, because I really think that the residents will know that this is, this is, it's more than a need, it's a necessity to keep the town rolling, moving forward, so.
And I don't want to give the impression that we're just going to blindly accept the school's budget. I just know that the impact of what we're required to pay regardless of whatever, you know, pans out at the end of the budget, it's still going to require an override.
Right.
So this is still, go ahead, Leah.
Sorry, Gary, have you gotten Bay Pass budget yet? Because I'm interested, because part of the school, for what you said, part of it is that our Rutland's minimum local contribution went up over 7% and that's set by the state. And so I'm interested to see if that's, that same percentage is seen at Bay Pass because that's, like I said, set by the state. That's not anything that, that any district has control over or any towns have control over. It's part of that formula.
Well, that's the meeting tonight. There's a meeting tonight actually, Leah, as well. That's why Mr. Becker is near tonight because Bay Path is meeting tonight for that budget.
But that number still is based on increased enrollment though, right? I mean, that's why
No, no, the extra, well, the extra 2% or 2.1, what is it, 2.32% or 2.23% or whatever gets us up to that 9.55% is because, I mean, some of it, yes, even with the MLC, is that there's increased student enrollment. Because I think they said, the school committee said what Rutland's population, school population increased by, was it 50 or 70 or 80 students or something?
I think 78, Leah. I think 78 was on the list.
Yeah, I was at the meeting and for some reason 55 was in my head and then 78 was in my head and I couldn't remember. But so that's definitely a piece of it. But also for the MLC formula, I think that there's other considerations in there in addition to the number of students. It's like medium, median home value and it's a complicated and not easy formula. So I think that it's a whole lot of things, but part of it is that if the state is saying that Rutland, you know, baseline of the state says Rutland needs to be paying, you know, almost seven, over 7% more, then, then that's, that's that. I mean, so that gives us a 2% wiggle room versus, you know, 2.5% wiggle room versus a 9.5% wiggle room. But I'm interested to see the, the Bay Path piece because, and see how our numbers shake out there for MLC.
We don't have them yet, Leah, so why don't we just wait?
No.
Right, but yeah, it'd be interesting to see if it's the same. Harry, you have a question?
Yes, you do. Does, and this can go to Leah too. Is any of you aware that we do have access to the proposed budget to see what it is?
We don't have
Are they just giving us a number?
They just give us a number.
We don't actually have facts in black and white.
They claim that they have more of a line item budget, that's supposed to be information, but we, yeah, you haven't received any, you haven't received anything, have you, Karen?
So we have nothing in black and white that we can sit down and say, here's what we need to do or look at here to negotiate. They're just throwing it at us right now.
We never get that, Harry.
That is pathetic.
Tameka, you have
I was just going to say that I had reached out to Bay Path and asked for that budget ahead of time and they said that they were not going to provide it until after their school committee met this evening. So I'm anticipating getting that hopefully tomorrow and tentatively scheduled for March 16th with the finance committee. I've gotten confirmation this afternoon from Wachusett and I'm just waiting to hear back from Bay Path.
And they typically are much more
We always get line by line, always.
It's a little later for them, for us, but yeah, they, they're usually transparent. It's the, it's the Wachusett budget that we really don't see the detail or any information on. Okay, any, but Gary, do you have anything else?
No, I'm good, that's it.
So we'll hold off on the whole dispatch move and everything until we have the other discussions?
Yeah, I do want to get it rolling, actually, Harry, because that's also expanding space that will be available for fire and police and public safety. It's going to give us that center. It's going to be two secure departments in that building and dispatch moved over. It's ideal location. They're right next to the tower. The building is there. If we had someplace else to put it, they would build the building.
No, I think, I think your process of the way you want to move things is great. I think from the plans that I've seen, the options, the operating, is great. It's just that how do you coordinate to cover the building, the town hall, the library, the old library, and the, and the safety building? Because as you're moving out of that, now you have to do some reconstruction, to me, to make the fire department more, we built a building and we never finished the top floor because we didn't spend the money.
Right, right.
Wasted money, wasted energy.
Well, the reason that we didn't finish the top floor is it had to be accessible as well. So you're talking an elevator or something else. But anyway, so that, that's where we go into like the plans, the engineering and for all those facilities. If we can make the, the town hall accessible and with an elevator and, and work on getting plans and specs and stuff for some of these other ones,
Yes.
then that, I mean, that, we will have further discussions, but I, I think that at least has a little bit more of a plan. So So next is the annual town meeting, discuss proposed calendar. I know, Karen, you had asked about holding off on this. We want to at least have it in place and we're going to have a discussions on Thursday. There's certainly plenty of time to make any kind of necessary changes, but we wanted to make sure we were still in line if we go forward with the current calendar. And, and the warrant and everything wouldn't be opened until the 20th, so we would not have to take any action should we make other arrangements. But we do have a, a plan here, which you've, you've already checked and Anita, we're all, we're good with the schedule for the town. So everybody has a copy of the, the calendar for town meeting? So do we have to take any, we don't have to take any action at this time, right?
No, we could just propose to see if the board was on
Any comments?
Yes, exactly. Any feedback on it?
So, so no action would be taken until the 20th?
Correct, that's open the warrant.
Any questions?
I, I just, so we would open the warrant potentially on the 20th?
Correct.
With the current, right?
Yes.
So we can do, we can do it that night. We don't need to open it tonight for, and say that we're opening it on the 20th. We could just wait and open it on the 20th.
No, we should be all set.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Next is the zoning board of appeals, accept resignation of Paul Coran?
Corin.
And we have a letter of right resignation, etc.
We do, yep, and he was also certified by the town clerk.
Okay. So if I can get a
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Paul Crandiera with disappointment.
Do we have a second?
Lightman seconds with disappointment.
Okay.
Black eye.
Roll call, okay.
A regret.
And nickel's eye with regrets. All right, so basically we're pretty much wrapped up. I did, we do have the goals, the board goals and objectives, as I said. I'm sorry? She's just sitting there. You weren't here for, you weren't here for anything specific, right? You were just here
Yeah, she was here, actually Gary wanted, that's the
Right, but yeah, you're not on, you're not begging for anything. I wouldn't keep Becky waiting. So just a quick overview on the undergoals. We talked about staffing. One of the things we talked about was interns. I brought someone in here to talk about interns. I know a lot of the boards, like the business, what is it?
Economic development.
Economic development wants to get a coordinator. I thought maybe we would try to look, see if we get an intern program to do that. Could work on projects. It would be short-term, not long-term. Could be short money out of ARPA funds or something like that as opposed to, you know, continuous employment. So that is something that I'm looking into. I want to check on some of the schools. Even some of the engineers, WPI and stuff like that, could help us on some of our project developments. So those are things we want to look on, into on staffing. Carol and I about financial, we're in the middle of a budget rather than looking at the situation right now. Leah, did you have any, you guys have any, have you done anything on the management growth, you and Tom?
I sent him a couple of emails or an email and we haven't connected after that. So I'll reach out to him again. And I think that that timeline is next year, so it's good to get started on it and reconounce the planning because really, I think we need support from the planning office to really make it, you know, like it's as much planning as it is select board.
Right, okay. And then communications, I know Anita had asked for updates on the, the websites and stuff like that. We had had discussions about you being able to get access. And we also talked about policies possibly on social media, correct?
Yes, so I have those on my list and I'm looking over them and will present them to the board when I have something more concrete to show you on those policies, but I am working on that.
So does anybody have any comments or discussions regarding our, our goals and objectives? Okay.
I, I'd put down here number five, solar committee. We're running pretty close to almost half of the age of solar panels are out there. How do you know that what they're doing is, is functioning? Everything, is it working proper? And that's one of the things that I felt that, as a matter of fact, we had one, one problem with one of the fields and with Becky and I, and I felt that we weren't members anymore. We're not, you know, haven't been
I believe Pete Letzky is still on that committee. No, I, I don't know how we left. I think it was like one and done, like we figured it was built and they will come, but
I had reached out to the members of the solar committee back in June when we did reappointments and Dick was the only person I heard from, so nobody was reappointed. So the board's
It's all on you?
I don't want it all on me, but I do feel that it would be nice once in a while to come up with a, a meeting and go out and check these fields. How are they doing? How are they, how's a town? Has the town got any problems with, with anything going on? Just to, just to keep, you know, keep up.
Right.
But like I say, it's not probably quite 10 years, you know, since the first solar field went in, but it's getting close. It'd be interesting to know how these panels are working out, how many are still functioning and, you know, has anything been updated?
Maybe we can develop a plan with like building inspector or planning, or just get some members of the different committees to go to, to review some of these projects and see where they stand, if that's
Dick, what was the lifespan? Do you remember what the lifespan of the panel was? Was it 25? It was supposed to be 20 years and then some, you know, they said, well, the maximum might be 25 years.
Okay, okay.
I, I've heard that just to get rid of those panels can be expensive, right? Because there's materials
Right now, yeah. Originally, they said, we'll strip them all to Brazil, but that is long gone now.
So my question is, does the town own it? We really don't own it.
The only we're getting is the pilot agreement and money, but
But it's not figured on how much they put out, the pilot agreement, how much they produce. We get a certain fixed number from them each year, right or wrong?
Right, exactly. We had to, we get a set like 20, for 20 years in the pilot agreement, this is what they're going to pay us for. Comes through personal property, it's part of our, part of our revenue.
So
There is the, the piece of the decommissioning agreements.
Yeah, the decommission is all, yeah, I agree with that, but we have no right to tell them what they are doing with their solar panels.
Whether they're generating electricity or not, isn't, as long as they're paying their personal, personal property tax bills and what was in the agreement for the decommissioning surety agreement, if they're making money or not, it's not our
The functioning of it, you know, if somebody else comes in and wants to put in panels and things like that. If we don't keep up the data on what the heck is going on with the other panels in town, you know, how, how can we have a, a good knowledge of what's going on?
We're not stopping anybody from putting stuff on their houses.
So I don't think that we necessarily have any oversight responsibility.
We don't have any responsibility.
No.
It's good, man.
Right, right now, there's somebody trying to come in for batteries, I believe, and we're trying to do a bylaw for that.
But that battery backup solar system is not going to fly, Richard. I can already tell you that.
Well, I, I, trust me, you're right. But there again, I mean, but we're in a process of, we're going to come up with a new bylaw for it because somebody has been trying to do that.
Harry?
Yeah, you know, I did a lot of investigation in solar panels and tracked the stuff. I used to track investment companies and stuff. One of the problems with solar panels is, I think you agree, we don't get to 20 years and then they go dead. The crystallines in them start to decay from day one. So by 15 years, where they were putting out 70%, they now might be putting out 60 or 55. So they're reducing their income, if you will, because they're not producing as much. So when I look at the town and if we sign agreements, it's like, okay, we're not going to take a percentage of a reduced amount we want to send in there. So are the panels viable or are they going to die in 15 years no matter what they say? Then what does the town do? How do we handle that? I mean, to me, yeah, I don't think it's a huge issue, but it is, is an important issue for the town. We're not getting any money from this stuff and yet we may have to deal with it at the end.
But I don't know at this point, like to Skip's point, I don't know that we really can do anything if they're not. We don't have any responsibility or rights to go in and say, okay, you're not producing.
Yeah, is it the landowner who's paying us the money or the solar company?
The solar companies have paid the money.
So they can just stop anytime they want? Now we got to go through legal expenses?
There's, no, Harry, they got
A legal pilot agreement, yeah.
A pilot agreement plus a disposal agreement at the other end. Anyway, that's what I, when I was involved with it, that's the way it was.
But they're required to pay us monthly, weekly, I don't know. But what, what do we have in there that says, if you don't pay us, we're going to take your assets? Because they can stop paying us. I don't care what the contract says. Then what?
Everything's paid right now.
I know.
That's all the counts. As long as they're paying, we won't worry about it. No one is still paying, then we go after them.
I know it's not your problem, but it'll be our problem.
I mean, that, hopefully that was the discussion prior to signing an agreement. We felt secure that we had the security in there.
Yeah.
And now technology, I mean, live solar panels and I can go on the computer and I can read what every panel is generating and I'm sure that they certainly have the technology and they're, and when necessary, they replace a panel if it's not functioning.
Yeah, I mean, I wish, I wish the town that's, I wish the town buildings had solar panels on, you know, so we could reduce our cost.
Well, actually, we did, we just did something with water or sewer, didn't we, with the DEP? Did we do some kind of energy grant? I was talking to them to see if we
Yeah, we did, it was not in full swing yet. We also looked into putting panels on the, on the side of DPW, but I think that's facing the wrong direction, right? Because that was a nice flat metal, not flat, big metal.
But these are other things we can look at when we look at facilities and efficiency.
I know you guys want to go home, it's just Who said that, Harry?
Well, I can't go home till somebody makes a motion.
Motion, Jerry.
My second.
Black eye.
And nickel's eye.